I guess we'll start. I will begin by opening the Wenham Select Board meeting of October 5th, 2021. Welcome to everyone who is here. The first order of business tonight, which is a little bit unusual for us, but a good thing to be doing is the first, we will start with a public hearing tonight. It's been publicized and published. It's a public hearing on personnel policies. And I think the first thing that we need to do is to vote to open the public hearing. So is there someone, maybe Gary, can you make a motion to open the public hearing for personnel policies?
Yes, I moved that the Wenham Select Board opened the public hearing on personnel policies for 6:30 PM posted on 5 October, 2021.
Great, thank you. And is there a second? And you're muted.
I think she was seconding.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I heard her say second.
That's a second, that's a second.
We'll take a vote then, Gary, your vote?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Catherine, yes. So we're in a public hearing. I will, we don't, I hope, trying to do all this right, I'm going to read the public hearing notice that was put in the Salem News as a part of, as a part of this hearing. The Select Board of the Town of Wenham, Massachusetts will hold a public hearing on proposed personnel policy revisions regarding the employee handbook. And they're listed in wenhamma.gov. If someone actually has the website and could put it in the chat, I think it might be useful to list that website. But moving on with the notification, the public hearing will be held Tuesday, October 5th, that's tonight, at 6:30 PM. Please note, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, this meeting will be virtual and can be attended by desktop, laptop, tablet, or phone by visiting the link posted on wenhamma.gov at least 48 hours, business hours prior to the meeting that, if you're on, then you've seen that. Supporting information, including each proposed policy revision, is available at wenhamma.gov and inquiries could have been and still can be, I guess, delivered to the town administrator's office. The public is encouraged to attend and participate. So we, we, the Select Board, we have Gary Cheeseman, Diane Buchall, and myself here for the Select Board. Ryan Farrar is our town administrator. We have had a first reading of all of these policies. The Select Board has, and some of them may be even a second hearing. But tonight is the night that we would like to hear from the public. Should there be public? I think there might be. And if we can do this, Ryan, I was thinking that perhaps if anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a question could put their name in the chat. I don't think we'll have hundreds of people. And then we can call on them in order for their comment or question. And I think at this point, there are a lot of policies that we're going to be, this hearing includes and that we'll be discussing later in the meeting. But I think at this point, if anyone has any comment or question on any of the policies, please, you know, put your name in the chat. We're happy to recognize you and just state your name. And so I'm gonna, I can't.
See, I was gonna see if I see anything in the chat.
Yeah. I had a few people who emailed me in the past week or so and said that they were going to attend. And a few people who said they were going to send in written comments. I don't know if you've, if you've received anything from anyone.
Not, not that I've seen.
Okay. So if you are interested in commenting, in case you just tuned in, if you put your name in the chat, we will call on you for your comment. And this is again, we'll take comments on all of the, any of the policies that you wish to comment on. So I think we have one person so far. Is that what I see?
Right. Deirdre, maybe, I don't know if Deirdre wanted to, I mean, maybe it was just easy, if, instead of typing everything, maybe if she wants to speak, we can recognize.
Well, Deirdre, did you have a comment for us?
I do, Catherine.
Okay, if you could just state your name and address, we're listening.
Sure, Deirdre Parati, 57 Maple Street. So I'm sorry, I missed the very beginning. So just comments on any of the policies?
Right. Because there are a lot of them and we'll keep track of the comments.
Okay, there are a lot of them. So thank you for the opportunity to comment and I'm really glad to see that these are being worked on. So I think that that is terrific and really important. I will say, in my read of them, I, I sort of felt like the ones that appear to be newly written, the code of conduct and the social media policy, I think, are quite strong. And I think where there's still some work to be done in tightening up the policies is in the ones that were sort of trying to bring into the 21st century, the ones that existed in the old handbook. I still think they're not quite there yet. And I, the one that I most want to comment on is the sexual harassment policy. So I'll start with that one. And I don't know, Catherine, in the interest of being efficient, I'm probably, it doesn't make sense to do sort of line edits here, but maybe there's an opportunity offline. But I will speak to some of the sections, if that's all right.
Yeah, and I think if you have line items, I would suggest that you send them to Ryan. And then we'll have a chance to, if we need to deliberate on them and see them all.
Okay.
If you have more than you wish to speak to.
It just might be too much for 15 minutes here.
Okay.
But the sexual harassment, I really do want to speak to. And some of this is a little bit deja vu. I did mention some of these things last year, though we realized this is, you know, a very different group this year. And I want to try to be clearer than I was last year. So I'm going to try to be very specific this time. So I think, first of all, in the application section, I think we need to be careful across the board in these policies to be sure that we're naming the groups that these policies apply to. So in some places it mentions employees and in others it mentions elected and appointed officials. And I think we need to be consistent across the board in saying, and in this one in particular, policy applies to all employees and appointed and elected officials, whether compensated or uncompensated. Right? So that it's clear that it applies across the board. I think it's, this policy could benefit from another statement, even though it has application. It doesn't sort of say anything about the scope. And what I mean by that is talking about which direction harassment can go in, genders that can be involved, there's, there's, I would use the Town of Greenfield, I think, has a very nicely written scope where they talk about harassments not defined by gender or supervisory roles, that it could actually apply to third parties who are made uncomfortable by witnessing sexual harassment.
I didn't feed her.
But someone's.
I'm sure it hasn't been fed earlier.
Kristen's gonna figure out how to feed her animals later, so.
Kristen, you're not muted.
Okay, scope.
Kristen, we're gonna mute you, okay? Thank you.
Did you say Greenfield for the scope, Deirdre?
Town of Greenfield has a very nice paragraph on scope. And I would just lift it from there, honestly. I think it's well done.
Okay.
So this, and then the section on coverage, the first part, I'm not really sure is necessary because the policies should just apply across the board. So I'm not sure it's necessary to have that list anymore. I think that's sort of an artifact. But the most important point that I want to make of all of these policies and this one is at the top of page two. And this is what I tried to say last year, so I want to be absolutely crystal clear. That first paragraph and that list, the bulleted list, I think just needs to be struck from the policy. Because what this is doing is basically saying that there are some instances that we, the town, and who's the town? Is that the Select Board? You know, I don't know what that refers to specifically, but given our history, this, this is not a good place to go. It basically says that there are instances that may not be considered sexual harassment. I don't think this section is true. Certainly, in my experience, sexual harassment training has been very emphatic in stating that it doesn't matter whether it's during work hours or whether it's on actual premises of work. I think this is old language that just has no place in a sexual harassment policy in the 21st century. So it's that top paragraph and then the bulleted list. The last two paragraphs, I think, are fine, those are kind of standard.
Deirdre, can I just get back to that? So is it, is it the, so am I in the right place on the screen?
Yes.
The second page?
Yes.
It's the top paragraph and all of the bullets or just the first bullet?
I would take out all the bullets, honestly.
Okay. Okay.
Because it's like creating loopholes and you don't want a policy that's creating loopholes or giving the impression that there are loopholes under which you can harass without consequence.
Okay, noted, okay.
Okay, that's my most important point. Okay. As far as sort of clarity goes under C, the definition of sexual harassment, the one, two, and three is fine, I think that's standard. It's a little confusing to then have the definitions. I would, at a minimum, flip them because quid pro quo refers to number one and two. And hostile work environment refers to number three. It's just sort of providing the official definition, so I would either link them or at least flip the order so that there's a little more clarity to it. Then, under the bottom of that page three, under procedures, it just says, may file a complaint with the Assistant Town Administrator. I didn't know if that position already exists or if that's what it's going to be renamed as. So that's a question, I guess.
We are making that change, hopefully tonight.
All right, good. Okay, this, the section B, sexual harassment investigation, I think the language in the code of conduct, I think, is actually much better and stronger. And I would make this section more consistent with how it's worded in the code of conduct. And I think specifically, here it's still referring to the investigation as internal and the code of conduct makes it clear that it can be referred to external investigation, which I think is good and appropriate and really important, honestly. But I think the code of conduct is sort of seems to be trying to back up the sexual harassment policy, but in fact, I think it's actually stronger. So I think the sexual harassment policy needs to sort of be matched in its strength of wording with what's in the code of conduct. And particularly with that external investigation. Then, under confidentiality, I still, I find that first paragraph a bit weak. And it talks about confidentiality strongly encouraged. You know, I think that's weak language. And here, what I would say is look at the Town of Amherst policy because I think they have some really good sections. I think their confidentiality section is well-written and has much stronger language. And again, I would just, you know, borrow from these other policies. Same thing under disciplinary action, which I know this is one of the new pieces to this, which is great that it's there. But again, I think it could use a little strengthening and consistency with the code of conduct. Conflict of interest is new and I think that's great. The section four sanctions is now redundant because that's the old section. And now it's basically been replaced with the disciplinary action. So it has the same wording and you don't need it anymore, I think. And then lastly, again, I refer to the Town of Amherst policy, but they have sections that I think are useful and I would actually add them here and three of them, which is the responsibility of supervisors, because that speaks to what's expected of supervisors in maintaining a work environment that is preventive, basically, doesn't allow for discrimination and harassment. There's a small section on records, basically, that, that any paperwork that's put, you know, files, complaints and so forth are kept in the records. And that they have an appeal section, which I also think would be a good addition for someone to appeal a judgment. Okay, so that's everything on the sexual harassment policy.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Was there, was there anything else on the code of conduct? You referred to the code of conduct policy. Was there anything else on that policy that you, since they are very related, other than, you know, making the language more coordinated? Anything else on that one?
The second paragraph, it's sort of similar to what I was saying on the sexual harassment, but to make sure all the groups are named here, it talks about elected and appointed officials, but not people who are hired as employees. So again, it's like to make sure all three groups are mentioned consistently. And it also refers to this anti-fraud policy, but I couldn't find that. So I didn't know if that was something that's going to be written. But I didn't see it in the old table of contents or the new. So I, and the other one was, there's a policy on ethics, which I think was 2010, but I couldn't find a copy of that either. So that, this sort of basket of policies is good to look at altogether to make sure that they're consistent in their referencing of each other and the language that's being used. So those two, fraud and ethics, I couldn't find. And it does say, in the enforcement section of the code of conduct, it talks about the town administrator shall refer for investigation to the contact named in the anti-harassment policy, but that's also the TA. So it's, the TA is referring to the TA. So I'm not sure that that's what you want.
That might be some of the, you know, the rewrites.
Right.
Yeah, no, they got lost, so thank you.
It gets, yeah, and it's hard to keep track. Can I get that?
Yeah.
And then I'm not sure in that enforcement policy, though, I like this language a lot, I think it's great. But it seemed to be repeating itself and I wasn't quite sure what the segue was. It wasn't totally clear. It sounded like if there's like an additional issue that happens, like this whole thing starts again. But the, the language kind of repeats in that paragraph. So I just think, take a look at that for clarity. But I do think the code of conduct is a fantastic addition.
Great. Okay. Any, any other comments from you, Deirdre?
I had sort of more minor ones, which I could just send to Ryan separately. Some things on the personnel evaluation policy and the recruitment and selection just don't seem to be quite current yet and could use some clarity.
Okay. Well, we will be deliberating on these policies as a board later. I, I have some, I think some of our comments might mirror some of your comments. But yes, if, if that's okay with you, Ryan, anything that you have that you can share, I think would be helpful if you can send it to, to Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm happy to, if that's okay.
Yeah, and in turn, too, just to ask of the board, I think Deirdre made a lot of really good suggestions here on the, on the sexual harassment policy in particular. So I, I think these are things that would ultimately strengthen the policy. So if it's okay, and we can, with the board, and I'd like to work with Deirdre to try to, you know, reflect some of the things and changes she suggested here. It seems pretty reasonable. I know you're gonna be talking about that later, but certainly I could, would be willing to do that because I think it's, these are some good suggestions that she was making.
I agree. Diane, is that okay with you?
Yes, it is. Wonderful idea.
Like Greenfield, Amber, help us out.
Yeah, I think this is one of our more important policies and has some of the most important changes. So I think it's one that deserves some more information and we certainly do with your, if I'm correct, Deirdre, I think you have an HR background, at least you sound like you have an HR background. So certainly your comments, anyone's comments, but yours come from a place of real knowledge. So I think, Ryan, it would be fantastic if Deirdre's willing to spend some time on this with you.
Thanks, if it's on, if that's okay with the board, because I think that would be helpful, certainly helpful to me and to create a better improv, too. So, so thank you, I think, and the board and Deirdre as well.
Thank you, I'm happy to, thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any comments? Many of these policies are pretty performer standard, but if there's anyone else who has any comments on any of the policies, raise your hand, put your name in the chat. We'll try to capture. I think.
Yeah, it's Kristen.
Yep. Kirsten, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm having some technical problems. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, I guess the only question I had was around the, the sexual harassment or just general discrimination. Is, would volunteers be covered by this policy or is it purely for coworkers? Because it says, may apply to discrimination, including harassment that occurs between coworkers. And I just, you know, we have high school students, we have volunteers of all ages coming in. And I know I've, I've worked at a nonprofit where, under state law, the volunteers were not covered by a sexual harassment policy. So it's a point of clarification.
I don't know that we contemplated that specifically in this policy. And if we did not, we certainly, I guess, need to look at that and make a decision. Is that?
I think it's also, it's a question of also, Kristen raised a good point, because it's, it's a question also of applicability in a sense of what, you know, what the Select Board can adopt that, you know, we could actually enforce. So, you know, but I think that's a good question and one we can follow up with Town Council on.
Great, thank you.
Anything? Anyone else? I can't always see everyone. But I don't want to miss anyone either.
Don't see anyone else on my end.
Okay. I don't either. Considering that we're still, I guess, actively take, going to take input. This is a procedural thing. I think that perhaps tonight we won't close this hearing. Because I think if we close the hearing, then we've closed ourselves off to any other input that might come in. That being said, we, we want to deliberate later and, and vote some of them in. So I guess I need a little procedural help there. Normally, I would just say we vote to close the hearing.
I guess, I guess the question, Catherine, is that, you know, if, if the board's perspective, we need to have the formal hearing because that's a requirement. However, you know, if I, if we know that I'm working with Deirdre and we're following up on the thing that Kirsten had asked about, you know, you know, we can still, if, if the presumption is that maybe with this feedback, you know, there's certain things that you're not going to close out tonight. You know, maybe we could just, you know, we could probably still keep it. You could probably still close the hearing, but still allow for there to be feedback on it.
Sure, that makes sense, especially since this is really follow-up on feedback that we got at the hearing. So if there's no new, if there are no new comments or questions, I guess I will take a motion, please, to close the hearing.
So I moved that we close the hearing on revisions to the Human Resources Handbook at this time.
Second.
Okay, for a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes? So this hearing is closed at 6:55 PM. Thank you, everyone, Deirdre and everyone, and Kirsten and anyone else who is listening. We will continue on then in our, to our regularly scheduled agenda. Interestingly enough, the next topic on the agenda is public input for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone here who would like to comment on something that's not on our agenda tonight, now is the time. And again, put your name in the chat. I'll give this a second, everybody's had a few minutes. Is there anyone that you can see, Ryan?
I do not.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll move along to the next section of our meeting, which are announcements. Ryan, if you can get us going on announcements, that would be great.
So to start our announcements, we've got a board and committee openings. First being Council on Aging. This is, recognizes the fact that you have a appointment later on in the agenda to appoint Karen Anger to the Council on Aging Board. So this is a remaining, remaining item to fill. We also have one opening on the Hamilton Wenham Community Access and Media Group. Two openings on the Iron Rail Commission. One opening for the last year, last two years of a three-year term for the Wenham Human Rights Committee. Two openings and two openings on the Wish Committee. So if anyone has any interest in that, please either send it to my attention or admin@wenhamma.gov via email.
Ryan, not to interrupt you, but can you put the slide, put the presentation back up?
Is it, is it not showing?
No, I'm seeing the sexual harassment.
Oh, my goodness, all right.
Policy still.
Hold on a second, let me, let me, let me read, thank you. Thank you, I thought, I thought, I was reading from the slide, so now. Thank you. Feel free, can you see, can you see it now?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so, so Council on Aging, Hamilton Wenham Community Access and Media, Iron Rail, Wenham Human Rights Committee, and Wish Committee is where we have openings currently. So thank you, Catherine, for pointing and for correcting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up, I wanted to let everybody know, October 21st, there is a form for resident feedback for the Town Government Study Committee. This is the three to five subcommittee, three members of the Select Board, potentially move to five members of the Select Board. This is happening at 7:00 PM and it's a Zoom forum. So we are, we also, I would note, also have the the survey online, this is the time, the, the link here is on the website. And we're looking for feedback from the community about this, this, this question. I think that it's less than 10 questions, at least on on the survey. So I'm looking at, it's really easy, so if people are watching and would like to participate, highly encourage you to get that information and provide that feedback, feedback back to the Town Government Study Committee. The special election is primarily scheduled for November 2nd and the election is scheduled, is scheduled for November 30th. Is, the treaty wanted, treaty's out this week, but wanted to inform those of you watching that ballots are expected to arrive the week of October 11th. Residents not in town on Election Day can vote absentee or vote by mail. An application is needed and can be found on the state's website. So, you know, links to vote by mail or absentee ballots and registering online can be found on the town's website under the Town Clerk Department page. So, and that's under Elections and Voting in 2021. Just a reminder that voting will take place at Town Hall during the hours of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I would note that, to that end, you're going to be voting, the board will be voting later today to reaffirm our single precinct for, for that. So we have not gotten to the point where we need another, so that's good news. A reminder that there are two rounds of, of A reminder that there are two rounds of bag leaf collection that are coming up. First is taking place on Saturday, November 20th and the second on Saturday, December 11th. So just to remind everybody, leaves have to be placed in paper bags or in loose barrels or loosened barrel, I should say. The you don't want to use plastic plastic bags and you don't want to mix and crush sticks with the leaves. So please keep that in mind and plan accordingly. So we are scheduling for tomorrow, October 6th. We are going to be having a a flu clinic. Wait, let me just say, Wednesday, October 6th, we're going to have a COVID clinic is advertised as well with the flu clinic at Pingree Park. So if you do want to register, that is up on the the town webpage. TownofWyndhamma.gov forward slash flu. And if you would like to sign up for any of the vaccine clinics, you are welcome to do that also online. So we are having this just as a regularly recurring thing happening Wednesday. All right.
Got a feedback problem, I think, or someone who's not muted, although it looks like everyone is.
It's like everybody's muted. Yeah.
Okay.
So so and then just to remind everybody that COVID COVID-19 vaccine appointments are being scheduled on a regular basis from Wednesdays from 3:30 to 6:30 PM at the Hamilton Senior Center. So we're working cooperatively with Hamilton on that. So that is it for for announcements. So.
Thank you for that.
Catherine, if you don't mind, I'll just continue on if you don't mind.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so just to give the board an update on our position postings. The Executive Assistant to the TA closed this past Friday. We've had 18 applicants. We're starting to circulate that internally. Though my hope is by circulating internally and developing a internal team to do the interviews. We hope to begin to schedule those interviews sometime next week and potentially into the following week. We are also receiving a number of applications in for the Assistant Town Administrator Position, which the board at their last meeting had allowed us to move forward with. So we're starting to get feedback on that and it's been some good responses on that front. I would note too, also, we're going to be discussing later in the meeting, the DPW Director Position. And hopefully get some guidance on that later at the meeting as well. So I forwarded to the group that the the letter that Catherine had signed to the Hamilton Wyndham School Regional School District regarding the board's interest to participate in the reopening of the the school agreement. My understanding is that's going to be taken up at the next regional school meeting, school committee meeting. As as the letter pointed out, this is up to that, up to the Regional School Committee and they do plan to discuss this and in the request that was primarily initiated by the town of Hamilton. So I wanted to let the board know, I attended my first exec board meeting for the Regional 911 in Middleton. The I was appointed to the Executive Board there. They need a certain amount of participating communities and leaders within those communities to serve in that role. So I was basically filling in Anthony's position and on that board and just wanted to make the board aware that we're keeping up to date with that and participating as well in the Regional 911. So a lot of interesting things happening there. It's a group I've been involved with when I worked in Middleton a number of years ago. And it's great to see how much progress they've made on that front. So it's it's come a long way. So that's it's very exciting. So the West Wyndham Park Study is, we've selected a vendor for that. They are currently working with Margaret on kicking that process off. And we're well underway with that and that's an exciting thing. So Margaret may be able to get some update on that when she's going to be speaking later in the meeting about anything else. Wanted to also make the board aware that Jackie and I met with the Historical Commission last week to provide an update on Route 1A project. We shared some shared some pictures, gave an update to them about where we were in the design process. And we've subsequently gotten some more information and wanted to just touch base with Jackie when she gets back on Thursday to begin to get that, push that information back out to the Historical Commission. But basically, they are looking at the, they're at roughly about 90% design on the light project. This is going to happen just out here in front of Town Hall. So it's made a lot of progress and it was, we really received some good positive feedback from the Historical Commission about where, you know, where we saw things going, the steps and projects taking to incorporate or at least reflect the historical nature of what's happening here in downtown Hamilton, Wyndham, sorry. And so they're making that, you know, they were appreciative of the fact that we updated them and are going to continue to have them be part of that process. Our hope would be that we would have a public hearing on that sometime in the November, December timeframe. They're still waiting for some more feedback from Mastot on that and but we are making great, great progress on that. Finally, the last thing I wanted to point out to the board that I made you aware of, but want to let the public know is that our own Chief Tenapoli has been named by the Greater New England Chapter of Juvenile's Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation as their December Cure Champion. So I think it's something that we all should be proud of, but I think, you know, talking to the chief about this. I think it's important also, you know, give some hope to people to say those who suffer from juvenile diabetes can go on and do great things like become police chiefs in town. So it really, you know, so you may be seeing the chief in some promotional videos, likely be in uniform. But it's something that I was, when he shared the news with me, I was really excited for him and I think it's a great representation of the town. And it's a very, very nice honor. So just to give the board a quick update on that. And that's all I have.
Questions for Ryan, Diane, or Gary? I just have one, actually, one comment and one question. Congratulations. Please pass on our congratulations to the chief. I think the fact that he's willing to share his, you know, his experience with juvenile diabetes with others is admirable and it's not surprising to me that he would be chosen as for for an honor like that. Relative to the 1A Signal Project, I know that we, I think I heard you say that there's going to be the or a sanctioned regular public hearing later in the year. But it's been a very long time since the public, the board, really has had any kind of an update. And if we can, if there's some information that can be shared, not really a hearing, but more from informational point of view of the status. And maybe some updated timeline information, I think that'd be great. If that doesn't fit with anything, we'll wait till November, December. But I think it's not a bad idea to start reminding people that it's still being worked on and it's incredibly slow, but it's happening. And get them ready to, if they have input.
I think, Catherine, to that point, so I think that they were still waiting to get some other feedback on the, so the the design team submits their design to Mastot and there's still feedback that they're waiting on. So I think we're okay with sharing maybe some of the preliminary plans, but this is, you know, this becomes like a, you know, 15 megabyte file. You know, it's, you know, that really you can, basically it's the design specifications for the project. So we believe that that's it's coming to be to that point. We may even bring in the design team to provide that update to the board prior to the public hearing to keep you updated. But I just want to make sure it's at a point where we, you know, we feel comfortable with with where it's at so that, you know, things have at least moved along enough on that front for it to be kind of be ready for the next set of input.
Sure, that makes sense. Okay, so we look forward to that. I have no particular chair's report tonight. A lot of stuff on the agenda. I don't have anything really to add specifically. Is there anything Gary or Diane would like to comment on or add?
Not here.
Okay.
Not here.
All right, then we'll move along from our reports. You're off the hook tonight, Diane, because we have no consent agenda. So we will not be voting on that under under moving past that, but under new business. We have, I guess, a couple of appointments. And I think in both cases, since we have one person for one position, we can probably take each motion first and then have discussion after the motion.
Right, I'm, I moved to appoint Karen Anger to the final year of a three year term on the Council on Aging from October 5th, 2021 until June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Comments or questions on this? I just have just a clarification, which I wanted to point out to the public. This has been on, was on our last agenda, but there were some moving parts and people about to resign and on the Council on Aging. That has all happened. And so now there is an open seat. And so this is the recommendation to appoint a person to fill the final year of a three year term. If there are no other comments, I guess we're ready to take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So thank you, Karen Anger. And we look forward, you'll be hearing from the town clerk soon. So one more appointment.
Right, move to appoint Jay Arar to a one year term as the election warden from October 5th, 2021 until June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Comments or questions? If not, I think this one, we can go right to a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane, your vote?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So again, thank you, Jay. He'll be here in front of us. The next item has to do with the federal census and I will ask Ryan to please introduce that one.
So as we had talked about earlier, the 2020 census is complete. And the census dictates the amount of precincts that communities are then assigned essentially. And based upon the census, the 2020 census data, the recommendation is for the town to remain as a one precinct community. So the request from the town clerk's office is to affirm that and the board to vote on it this evening.
Okay, are we ready for a motion or do we have comments or questions about that? Oh, ready for a motion?
Right, move pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 6, to affirm the town of Wyndham wishes to remain a one precinct community and hereby request the Secretary of the Commonwealth prepare a single precinct map on the town's behalf.
Second.
Okay, for a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So it's unanimous. And I think this is going to require looks from our packet that it will require some signatures. So this is a reminder for when folks are, or when it's ready, let us know.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is written as a review of the Maple Woods Community Preservation Act and Affordable Housing Trust Grant Loan Extension Requests and Discussion of Recommendations Regarding Next Steps. You know, there's been some discussion about this in by the staff and so I'm going to please ask Ryan and whoever else you'd like to speak to. Let us know what's up with that.
Okay, so can everybody see the this draft letter that we have up right now?
Could it be a little bigger?
We certainly could do that. Is it, that's, let's. How's that?
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Okay, okay, right. So this is something, is a topic that came up at prior board meetings and something that we subsequently touched base with Town Council on. So what this is, is a way to sort of reflect some of the, some of the questions that we had raised at earlier meetings. And the letter is set up for Margaret and my signature. Basically, it's it's indicating to to Harbor Lake Partners, who is developing the Maple Woods Project, some of the stipulations that we'd like to see them follow up on. But it also emphasizes the fact that the votes that were taken at town meeting, the $1 million appropriation that is still supported by by the town. And this provides for, the letter basically expresses our continued support for the for the Maple Woods Project, but also points out, and we highlighted this sentence here that, you know, that they may need to seek an amendment from the Community Preservation Committee prior to their June 22nd deadline that this may actually have to be another article back in our April, well, not back, but potentially at our April Town Meeting to make sure that that Maple Woods meets all of those standards. I, Margaret is on the call. I know I'm not addressing everything on this, Margaret. So I just would ask you to help me fill in the gaps here when I'm not particularly addressing.
Sure, yeah, okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, hi, Margaret.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Ryan. So the, I think what we wanted to kind of explain was that at the time that the original article was put together, everyone thought that the one year that that the, that the, the units being on the SHI would expire a year from the date the comp permit was issued, which was June 2019. I'm sorry, June 2020, the comp permit was issued. So at the time of town meeting vote, we thought that the comp permit would be issued and then they would expire a year from then, which would be June 2021. That wasn't the case. Start of the one year was February 2021, after the stipulation of dismissal was filed. And because the condition assumed that June 2021, they, but but they didn't expire until February 2022. That ending the project deadline, we feel would be consistent with the intent of the 2019 vote. So I know the dates are a little confusing, but when this, the loan agreement was drafted and the article was approved at town meeting, everyone thought that the comp permit would be issued in June and then they would expire from the SHI if the building permit was not taken within that year. But again, it wasn't the case. We had to wait. They didn't even get put on the SHI until the until the stipulation of dismissal was was filed. So that didn't happen until February 2021. So these units are on the town SHI until February 2022 and unless they pull a building permit before then. So again, what we felt was by extending this, it is in keeping with the intent of the original article. It's also, we also heard from Town Council that the Permit Extension Act of 2020 really does come into play with this. When in in early 2020, when all this was happening for us, no one expected the state of emergency to last so long and what impacts that would have on Maple Woods trying to get their permits together and trying to get all of everything to happen for them too, in a timely fashion. So we felt that it could be argued that the the deadline was told under that act also until 60 days after the rescission of the state of emergency. So we feel like this board can issue this extension until February of 2022. But again, it's only this one condition that's being extended. The the Select Board has the authority to amend or 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 extend most of the aspects of the loan agreement. The Community Preservation Committee would only be making a recommendation at town meeting to amend the town meeting vote from last, from 2019. So again, so we feel that going to town meeting next spring would allow the town to amend the town meeting vote from 2019. And again, it makes sense that CPC would be part of that. So I'm, I'm, I, we feel comfortable with sending this letter to Maple Woods. to um Maplewood's so that they feel confident moving forward with the project. We do anticipate that they will be pulling a building permit prior to February twenty twenty-two. We've discussed with them the need to do that so that these units do not come off the S H I. And again, those deadlines, I think, were created to ensure that the building permits were pulled before they expired from the S H I. Um, so I'm not sure if I made myself understandable there, but if um if you have questions, I can certainly answer them.
Uh, just to just to add one thing to Margaret's sentence is so to to really simplify this, this is a long way of saying the board doesn't have to really do anything.
Yeah.
What this letter does is, you know, we the request that been made to you, but we believe from the input we've received from town council that this letter i- is responsive, also gives um uh the Harbor Lights Group um uh information that they can then share with D H C D when they go for their next round of funding, uh, which I believe is in the December timeframe, uh, to show the town's continued support for this, but at the same time doing it by the proverbial letter of the law. So um, yeah, so that just to add to what Margaret said, so like, thank you, Margaret.
Yeah.
Gary or Diane, do you have any questions on this? So I guess both, um Diane?
So my question would be, is this letter acceptable to the Affordable Housing Trust? I guess I'm asking Margaret, maybe?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Diane. Um, Affordable Housing Trust did send a letter recommending um that the select board extend this. They have not, I don't believe the Affordable Housing Trust has seen this letter.
Okay, because it doesn't say that we're extending it. It just, we're not really doing anything. We're just saying we we support this. I don't think we need to make an extension yet. And I want to make sure that they will be okay with that.
Well, the trust is m- meeting soon.
Um, okay.
So I assume, Margaret, I don't know this for sure, but I assume this would might be something that's on the on the agenda. Um, but again, I think am I if I, am I understanding this to correctly to say that an extension is not needed, meaning that it will not impact anything that Maplewood is doing at this point. Um, that that Maplewood will continue to be able to do what they what they want. Um, and or what they need to do and already actually have done and that we need to uh sounds like just reaffirm um at town meeting.
Yeah, and I think for for this select board to um, you know, approve us sending this letter, it it reaffirms reaffirms the town commitment to funding this project. Um, and that in at town meeting, we can amend last, you know, the town meeting vote. And again, it's it's not really essential that all of this has to happen because the select board is not going to release any of the funds until the conditions are met. And the select board has the authority over those funds. So we're just giving um Maplewood some uh level of confidence that those funds will be there when they do are ready to move forward. They have applied in Octo, I think uh in September, there was an application to D H C D that they have looking at a funding possibility. And they're pretty confident, I think, that they're going to get that funding. And again, we are going to work with them to get their building permit pulled so that these units will stay on the S H I and the project moves forward.
Catherine, uh, Joe had asked.
I saw that, but I just wanted to loop to Gary first before we go to Joe. We certainly will recognize you, Joe. But Gary, I think you had your, you had a comment or a question?
So I guess uh for Margaret again, the pulling of the permit, does that change the date on when the S H I drops off?
Um, yes, Gary, the, when the comprehensive permit is issued, in a typical situation, a comprehensive permit is issued and then those units immediately go on to the town's S H I. Then the the developer has one year to pull a building permit. So they're given that little um timeframe to get the building permit. If the building permit isn't pulled within a year, then the you the units come off the town's S H I. In the case of Maplewood's, however, the the comprehensive permit was issued in June of twenty twenty. But they did not get on our S H I until the stipulation of dismissal was filed. There was, you recall that there was an appeal to this by some residents. So once that stipulation of dismissal was filed, then the state put these units on our S H I. That didn't happen till February of twenty twenty-one. So the state gave us a year from February of twenty twenty-one. So February of twenty twenty-two is when these units would come off the S H I. If a building permit is pulled before that, they stay on the S H I. Then they're they're on there permanently.
All right, so the pulling of the uh building permit by the contractor will permanently put the uh units on the H S I so long as the whole project goes through, correct?
Yes, yeah, yes, that's correct.
And the second question is, um, having committed the funds originally, the Community Preservation Committee, is there any deadline associated under the CPC terms where the uh contractor has to uh start some sort of work?
From what I understand, the loan agreements have conditions that the developer has to pull a building permit within three hundred and sixty and three hundred and sixty-four days, so it's a year. But that condition was written to coincide with what at the time, we thought was going to be the deadline for pulling the building permit to keep them on the S H I. So that's what the the question is here for 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 us to tell Maplewood's. We're not going to hold you essentially to that condition in terms of it being a year from the date the um comprehensive permit was issued. Because original loan agreement did say they had to pull a building permit within a year of the comprehensive permit being issued.
All right, so so long as the building permit is pulled, is there any action that the CPC has to do to change any other deadline?
I don't believe there is, Gary.
Right.
I think we'll, I think that we'll have to review that. Um, but yeah, Joe, thank you for joining us and um, Joe is the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust. Did you uh share something with us?
Now, uh, yes, thank you, Catherine, for having me. Um, and thank you guys for uh speaking about this. I uh again, yes, as as uh you stated, we haven't had a chance to read this letter until right now. I apologize, I'm on a mobile phone. So and with my age, reading it is not the easiest of things at this moment. Um, I feel like I would like to ask the the article that was approved by over eighty percent of the of the voting at the town meeting gave discretion, if I'm not mistaken, to the Board of Selectmen for extension. Is that correct?
Well, that's my understanding, if I may, is that that's partially correct. That's correct in some of the conditions and not all of them.
Which conditions are not?
Oh, and I don't have it in front of me, Margaret May, but I think the um, I think the point is that the at least what I understood from council, yeah, I'll I'll, we'll find it for you. Um. It's either the it's either the building permit, it is one of the two things he requested, either the building permit or the um certificate of occupancy. And I think Margaret, help me here. I I don't have it in front of me.
So the two thousand nineteen vote permits the select board to extend the completion deadline. But it did not address the um, the building permit debt.
Right.
Okay.
So there were um instances where the select board had specific permission to extend.
Okay, so may I ask why the CPC needs to reconsider this if this is not to do about the building permit?
From from what we understand, Joe, the the CPC does not have to do anything with the loan agreement. It's only the the town meeting vote that was done in twenty nineteen would would be amended at the next town meeting. But it's only
To extend the to extend the completion date.
To to amend that completion date. Now, the the issue too is by next town meeting, they will have a building permit. I mean, we're certain of that. They'll have a building permit and they may even have their funding. So between now and then, if the select board was asked to release those funds, then they, I think it's, I think essentially they could do that.
So the uh
It will be a moot point.
Right, the trust uh recommended that the Affordable Housing Trust loan agreement be extended to the, but that's what we requested of, or that's what we voted in support of and requested the Board of Selectmen to vote on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, I don't see that that's what we were talking about yet.
I think what we did at the time, Joe, was we just thought when this um request came in from Maplewood's, we all thought, oh, well, okay, we just want to extend that um that uh time to pull a building permit. And because it's language in both of those loan documents, we had the Affordable Housing Trust go ahead and make that recommendation to extend it. And what we've found since is that this not really uh and it's not really necessary for an an actual extension to be voted on. It's more or less us saying, okay, yeah, we see that you 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 can't pull your building permit within a year of June twenty twenty because that date's already passed. And that now we we are just saying, okay, we understand that and we're still supporting the project and the funding is still in place. And when you do pull your building permit, then the funding can be released as long as all the conditions are met of those loan agreements.
So if I may, just to clarify, just a second, Joe, I think I'm trying to answer your or clarify the answer or find out the answer to your question. Um, those can, the conditions, I believe, were not only in the CPC article, but in both the grant agreement for the CPC money and the Affordable Housing Trust loan grant of loan agreement, Affordable Housing Trust loan agreement. So the conditions are in all of the documents. And so I think what I'm hearing is it makes sense to just follow those conditions until we really either don't need to extend the deadline or or absolutely do need to do that and make the have the town meeting vote of two thousand twenty-one therefore match the conditions that we originally voted on in two thousand nineteen, if it's necessary to do that. Two thousand twenty-one, is that? Does that clarify anything? So that's my sort of understanding of what I've heard from
Yep.
the staff.
I've uh again, first impression and have not passed it by the trustees. My first impression of this letter is that's a very tepid lukewarm. Let's wait and see what the town says again. Even though it was uh a very strong majority in favor of it. Given that Harbor Light is now in the position of being invited into the mini round that was submitted in September, the support of the town being conveyed by the Board of Selectmen seems as though it would help their chances of winning this and supporting the needs and the wishes of the town. And I feel like this letter is sure will continue our support with these caveats. And I I find that unsupportive rather than supportive. It doesn't feel like it reflects the wishes of the town.
Well, Joe, oh, yeah, Gary.
So I think uh we need to get that simplified route here. So Margaret, will you confirm that so long as they pull the building permit, there's no other roadblocks in place to prevent them going forward with the project? Even though the building permit was late? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Gary.
And so there's, so if they pull the building permit, there is no action actually needed at annual town meeting? What action would the, would the town meeting take?
It would seem to me that that there is, uh, there is no further action needed. Um.
Then can I ask why we're putting that into a letter of tepid support?
Be- because they, because Maplewood's uh or Harbor Light Community Partners request, made this request for an extension some time ago, as you know, and we our council um think that the right thing to do is to provide a response. And it's clear a response as we can provide. And the response, I think, is simply our support continues. We that you have the town's full support and the fu- the funding, funding support continues. Um, there have been some, there's been some new information. Um, and things are later than they were. And so we want, uh, if necessary, to take the opportunity to clean things up. This is the way it was described to me. The cleanest way to do this is to bring it forward to town meeting to just, if necessary, reaffirm. There are other conditions, but you know, I think we all can read what they are.
It sure seems like we're making it more complex by adding in a caveat that might not have to be brought up. So I guess for for a clear statement, I would ask that you consider removing anything that might add complexity and doubt. Because that is not what the town has suggested to the state. And to put it in there seems to go against what the town has asked for.
It seems like there's two points to be made here. One, you know, we fully support the project still. And two, please get your building permit pulled and that will clear up the whole situation.
Exactly.
If I may um jump in, so I I understand, from what I understand is Harbor Light needs a letter of support from us, not necessarily an extension, which was was which was originally requested. So the letter that we've written to you, Joe, doesn't sound super supportive because it puts in that paragraph about um, the twenty nineteen possible annual town meeting change, et cetera, et cetera. Would it be acceptable if we take that paragraph out? And all we're saying is we're responding to your request for an extension. We don't think you actually need an extension. We want to remind you that things are be- behind due to the pandemic. We understand all that and you have our support. And um, we'll look forward to everything happening in February twenty twenty-two.
I would, I would, I uh as one person, I would think that that states it more clearly and meets the the wishes of the town as well as those that were conveyed by the trust.
So I'm not really sure why that middle paragraph is in there.
Well, you know, Diane, they, Harbor Light did not ask for a letter of support. There have been multiple letters of support and
Okay.
you know, and the commitment of funds. So what they didn't, they didn't, if I'm correct on this, that at this point, it was not a a request for a letter of support. It was a letter of a request for an extension of deadlines.
So what we could say is that you don't need it. I mean, I don't know why you need to put in the, you don't need it, but you might expect it in the town meeting.
I hear you. And I think we, wh- what I suggest that you do is um speak offline to um to Ryan and to Margaret to understand council's point of view. Um, because that's, I think, what we're trying to reflect here in this letter. Um, and um
Margaret and Ryan, can I ask, what, did the town council ask for that line to be put in about the town meeting?
Town, yeah, well, town, yeah, no. Because the, one of the um conditions in the loan agreement is the borrower shall meet all conditions set forth by the Town of Wenham Community Preservation Committee in Article twelve, Section eight, and is approved by annual town meeting on April twenty nineteen, which are as follows. So that one, that that phrase, I believe, is what that condition says you have to meet what town meeting voted. Okay, you have to meet these conditions the town meeting voted. So in what, now that the loan document uh the agreement is with the Board of Selectmen, they, I mean, the select board, I'm sorry, they have the ability to um extend the deadlines for the uh completion date. There's specific language in the document that says they can extend the completion date. Um. They don't they don't, there's nothing under the condition that says um the the grantee applies for and receives a building permit from the inspector within three sixty and three sixty four days of being issued a comprehensive permit. So again, the I feel it could be up to the select board to make that determination. But town council feels in order for us to be, you know, cross all the Ts and dot the Is at town meeting in the spring, just make sure that we, we change it to say that the deadline, this deadline for pulling a building permit is extended to whatever date. Um, I, I
May I ask, I, I love, I'm sorry, Margaret, but I, I would really love, since the request, as Catherine said, was uh, an extension of deadlines by Maple Woods or by Harbor Light.
Harbor Light, yes.
The response of that seems to be written in the first paragraph, which says, we don't think you, you need it. That seems like, and that we continue to have the support with the funds earmarked. I, again, I don't understand why Harbor Light needs to be told of what if, that might be a low probability if they pulled permit. I mean, it's almost like saying, and we could die tomorrow in a global uh pandemic. I mean, I, I, it seems as though you're trying to put caveats in there that are not relevant to what they've asked for.
I think it's more concrete than that, Joe. I think we have a responsibility to not only um say yes or no, or we don't need the extension, but we have a legal responsibility to make sure that our process is clean. This is at least what I understand and can't be questioned later. And that that process should be not only transparent to all of us in town hall and everyone in the public, but also needs to be transparent to the developer. And that, I believe, is all that the point is here. It's full transparency. Uh, we're not going to surprise you in January by asking you or by asking for an extension from, from the CPC. You may, they may not have quite gotten their response yet. Um, I, I think it's important that we don't hide this fact. It's just a procedural thing. Um, I think it's, we can make the statement of, of support stronger if we need to.
Very much.
But I, I think yeah. Yes, Diane.
I, yeah, I'm sorry, you, uh, my, my clock, I blocked out for a little bit.
Okay, I, go, go ahead, Diane.
So I just, I, I think I don't agree with that. And I know that might, that might be coming from the lawyers, but I feel as if we are adding things to something that doesn't need to be there yet. The contract's done, we've signed everything, no one's doing anything wrong. They asked for something they don't need. All we have to do is say, you don't need it, you still have rush report, good luck, talk to you in a little bit.
So I can't
Needs to go through the lawyers and stuff.
Well, and I think that it has, and I'm speaking as if like I'm the expert here. I'm not. Um, I'm, I just listened to the same thing that maybe you folks heard as well. But it sounded to me as if it was important um, to take the step of including the, you know, amending the town meeting, uh, amending this at town meeting. Um, this is what council has told us to do. So we may not necessarily agree or think, I, I don't know what, I don't know what to say. Um, what, what we take, can take all this input, I guess, and um bring it back to council.
Just feel like this is a delay, this is a delay of something that was asked for by the Affordable Housing Trust and you have, and I just feel as though it's not meeting the needs of, or the wishes of the town. And I don't know what the town council said, but I do know uh, from my interactions with lawyers that they do attempt to give you every possibility. But that doesn't mean that you have to follow exactly what they say, or else we would not have people having any contracts between each other. So given that this was just a request for an extension, it seems as though to say you don't need it from the Board of Selectmen at this time. It appears as though that's all that's asked for. And my, I, I just feel like um
Yeah.
So Margaret or Ryan, can you provide Joe with a letter from council? Um, is that, is that a reasonable thing? And this way you'll have that full information and um if you would like to
Sorry, does Gary and Diane have it? I guess I'd love to hear their opinions of that letter.
It's fine with me, but I, this is not an Affordable Housing Trust meeting, Joe. So, uh, and we have no action on this agenda. So certainly anyone can speak. I'm trying to be cognizant of the time. Um, but yeah, we can make one more round. We, I think we know where Diane stands, although I think she has some questions that maybe council needs to answer for her as well. Um, but speak ahead. Go ahead, we'll get this another few minutes.
I've spoken my part, Gary.
No, I think it's just, uh, the key I see is for the building permit to be pulled. As Margaret said, if the building permit gets pulled, everything is fine unless we really want to cross every T and dot a, every I and retroactively have town meeting affirm our actions. But I do not see any reason to go back through the whole CPC process again. That's done. Margaret said there's no deadlines available there. And the only deadline we're talking about is February twenty two, my understanding that they want extended. But if they get the building permit in, that's a, a mute point as well. If that's correct, Margaret?
Yeah, that's, I feel that that is correct, Gary, that um the timing of this, again, was, was created because we wanted to make sure these units stayed on our S H I. So we wanted to tie the funding into that. And the timing was incorrect when this was created. Um, you know, like I said, typically they would have expired after a year from the date that the comprehensive permit was issued. But that was not the case with this project. So the deadline really should have been three hundred and sixty five days from February, from the date this um dismissed. So.
But so right now, if they pull the permit, they, everything goes forward as planned unless we need to go back to town meeting to retroactively confirm the changes due to the pandemic or the delay past the original date. All right.
Yeah.
So I think we can, yeah, my, so my conclusion is I think the letter only needs to say, we have gone to council that we may need to take some action later, but right now, all you need to do is pull the permit. We fully support you. And if there's any other contingency later on, we may have to go to town meeting to correct retroactively the one uh condition there, so.
Uh, it'll be your board when the time comes to determine that all of the um, conditions have been met when they do come to the town for the funds.
Right.
Well, and just to, just to put a real point on this, there are more conditions. There are six or seven conditions.
Yeah, there are.
So we just, we keep talking about the building permit. That's the first, oh, I guess the next deadline that is, is in there, but
That's the one that has, yeah, that's the one that has the deadline that they're extending.
So we're going to confirm, Gary and Diane have some thoughts. We're going to confirm that and Joe with council and I guess we'll take this up um at our next meeting. I'm, I guess I, I would say since this has been um, this, the format of this letter or the contents of this letter have been suggested as important by town council. I'm a little bit uncomfortable just saying, well, let's just ignore it. Um, we've gotten some pushback on it and that's fine, but I would like, I personally would like to hear them. This is not a project, in my opinion, and I understand I might be in a minority, um, that we can afford any uncrossed Ts or undotted Is. Um, you know, we were literally in council for, and, and we're like almost there. And it sounds actually, it seems very optimistic about, at least what we hear about this, this funding round and um, I, I just don't, we spent what, eight years, seven years in litigation? And like I said, I think we're, I think Harbor Light's about there. And I am reluctant to um not include something based on our own personal opinions or a majority opinion without being very clear um to, to council, so. That's just uh, and we, we can't vote on it tonight anyway, so. Is that okay with everyone? If we just get some clarification and take Joe's action, Joe's, well, of course, Joe has to meet with the trust because um, the trust has to agree with him. Um, and I don't doubt that they will, but we'll take this up at our, hopefully for the last time at our next meeting and um, if we did nothing and didn't take anything up, it's kind of funny, we spent a lot of time talking about something that I'm not sure we need to right now, and I've said that before. But anyway, is everyone okay with us making a last round with um council on these specific issues and concerns that Gary and Diane and, and Joe seem to have? Make sure that we can clarify them. We'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yes.
I prefer to do it now, but um if you don't feel comfortable blanking out some of that information, I guess we have to wait.
Well, and we have no, we don't, our agenda doesn't reflect a vote. So even if I felt comfortable, I think it's fair, only fair to, for the public to know that we could potentially be voting on this. Um, we're receiving a recommendation really from Margaret and um, and Ryan and um, so I guess we have to wait for, to vote anyway, but we
Next meeting will be uh, action items to vote then?
I hope so.
To vote on a proper response.
Well, or, or to, yeah, I guess at this point, we're there, Margaret, there doesn't seem to be any action required. And this letter is um sort of a, a courtesy to close the loop with Harbor Light Community Partners. But the board is not taking a vote on an extension at this point. Or no extension. It's, it's on, it's basically on the letter.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, yes.
So next, at the next meeting, we will decide wha- what our proper response will be.
Right.
Or what our final response will be.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah. And if we literally need to make one.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
All right, hopefully by, by the next meeting, we'll have some information on the building permit.
Right, let me ask a question as long as we're on that. Um, can building begin before the property is acquired?
No, they wouldn't begin building until it's acquired. They could pull building permits though before it's acquired.
So they can
Yeah, they would, they would work in conjunction with the current owner.
Okay, so they'd get the current owner's permission to do work on the property that they don't own?
Yes.
Is, is that right?
Yes.
If, if I may, I think, if, I think it's the value uh that has been decided is that it will have a building permit on it. So
Say that again, Joe.
Transaction, I believe, my understanding is that the building permit is part of the condition of the purchase of the land. That Harbor Light can go after the burning, uh, building permit so that the purchase of the land can happen. So it's, it ha- it's a step to the acquisition.
Okay, I don't completely understand that, but I trust you, so we can find out about that. Okay, okay, we're going to move along here since we have a lot more to do. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your comments. This is, we never seem to have a, it's always a difficult subject, so thank you. Um, the next thing that we have on the agenda, my screen has gone blank, sorry, is um a review and possible vote to approve the revised, do I have this right? Um, permitting coordinator job description. Ryan, I think that's for you.
So this is, uh, as Catherine pointed out, we were just taking a look at the revised permitting coordinator position. If you remember, uh, some of that had been blended together with uh some of Jackie's responsibility in a director of administrative services. This trips this back uh to a, a more simplistic uh reflection of what this position will be. Currently, this position is being funded through CARES and ARPA money. We intend to do that for the remainder of the fiscal year and uh, uh, hopefully come forward in the FY twenty three budget process funding this, uh, funding this uh position permanently. Uh, I would note that, can everybody see my screen with this, the permitting coordinator?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the uh, uh, adjustments here are things, I think, uh, I'd ask the board to, uh, opine and give some perspectives on, on this. This is at the blue comments, I believe, of Gary's comments that had come in. Just cleaning up some um titles here. Um, and yeah, again, historical commission um and uh, and, and basically noting it that that is a responsibility for this position to support that group. And um, basically, just again, stripping a lot of this back to really focus the position on um, uh, on permitting support and support for uh, the um, uh, the historic district slash historical commission, so.
And the board of health.
And the board of health, right. Yeah, well, and I, I think that was already there. Um, and that's just, it was so, and we're clarifying that as well, that, that's also part of it too, correct, Diane? So, so um, you know, that, and the changes that I, or the feedback I received was specifically from Gary. And I don't know if I, I, I don't think I had anything back from um Catherine and Diane on this one, but um I know I had some of the other ones, but not necessarily this one. Any question?
Diane, did you, did you have anything that you
No, I thought, I, no, I thought it was good. It was basically what the permitting coordinator was, you know, before it merged with the uh special project.
Yeah. Um, I, I agree, I didn't have any specific comments. I did, um, just wanted to clarify that this is a part-time position.
Correct, correct. And in fact, actually, it's in the title, it was, it's eighteen hours a week.
Ah, okay, right, okay. I, I, I thought it was fine. I agree with um Diane, it seemed to reflect what the job was when we had this position before. Gary, did you have any further comments?
And I think it's ready to go. Do we need several motions on these or uh?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think we have a motion for this one. Uh, yeah.
Bring it up.
It's on all business D.
Okay.
Hey, move to approve the permitting coordinated job description dated October fifth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Seems like we've had our discussion. Um, we'll move to a vote unless anyone objects. Um, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we have a permitting coordinator job description. And uh, the next one is review the prospective hiring process and possible to approve the revised assistant town administrator job description and a review of the assistant to the TA position.
So Catherine, if I may, um, let me
Please.
Uh, so um, first step in the process, uh, that, uh, that I wanted to touch base with it would be in terms of um, what the hiring process would look like for uh, the um ATA uh position. So um, what I'm proposing to do is to uh, uh, basically have a, have a um, a review team and an interview team uh to be involved in this. Uh, that would include uh, Margaret, uh, a, uh, the, uh, Jamie, uh, our finance director, uh, Chief Tenapoli. And I was also going to suggest the possibility of having one member of the select board serve on um, on that group as well as part of the interview team. Um, if, if the board was so inclined. So um, we, as I said, we, we're currently receiving in the uh, applications uh, in on that process, so uh, they're coming right along. And um, you know, but I, I think I'd like to at least try, start with addressing how uh, that evaluation process would take place. So um, and again, the primary piece, piece that I'd say for, for you is to determine whether or not any of the members of the select board would like to participate in this endeavor.
So that's a question to us. Um, what do we think of this process? This is a, um, ultimately a recommendation to the select board. So Ryan is suggesting a, a committee. Um, does anyone on this board wish to serve on that committee? Or screening committee, I guess you'd call that.
Yeah, yeah, the committee's, it's too formal, I think.
And it really isn't
Just to serve on the interview team, I think.
Interview team, yeah, that's better. This, this is not Interview team, yeah, that's better. This is not a committee. We're not appointing anyone.
Correct, correct.
Really.
Helping advise, yeah, advising and making a determination as to who to hire.
I would be happy to do that if that's, if we want to do that.
Okay. Assuming that the schedule can be, um, accommodated, I guess, right? Do you have any, do you have flexibility with that in case those?
Great, thank you Diane. That's great.
Yeah.
That's okay with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you've got a team of, well, team, a group that's going to.
Okay. Um, the next piece is the act, is the town, um, Assistant Town Administrator's job description, so can everybody see this? That that's up right now, um, the current. Okay, so what this reflects is this has, uh, some of Catherine's input, um, Gary's input, and I, and I, and there were things that were touched on that also included with Diane. Said, so, um, what these updates that you'll see, um, and I don't want to speak for, maybe I'll let Catherine speak to it. In terms of maybe some of the conversations that we had about and the updates we've made on, on this.
So the only real comment, uh, I think substantive comment, and I've thought about this a lot and had a few conversations with, with Ryan. Is that the, my only recommendation for amendment is, um, to, to just change the language a little bit, uh, and the focus a little bit. Of the Assistant Town Administrator, um, who, who is going to be a, a resource, I think. This comes from my conversation I had with, with Ryan, would be a resource for information, for finding documents, for understanding policies. Relative to human resources, so this person is not going to be the Human Resource Manager or Director. But would be an important resource so that, to take some of the, I'm not sure I'd call them clerical. But the administrative kind of things that are involved in many human resource, um, functions off of, uh, off of Ryan. So that's why the language of access of resource and advisor to the Town Administrator on Human Resources instead of the. Primary hu- Human Resources Manager. That was, I, I think, uh, that and the role, uh, the other thing was the role in. Social media, which really relates to the, to the other position. And, and just a clarification of a few things, like it's, this person, I believe, will be ultimately, well. Ryan's ultimately responsible for everything, but, uh, within his group, uh, his staff, this person would be responsible for production of the annual town report. As Jackie was, so that was that. Change, and I don't think there was really anything. Of new, I had made, we'd made some comments earlier that had been incorporated, education and things, but I think that was.
Those are all helpful, helpful updates, so yeah, that's fine.
So that was, those were my, um. Uh, again, you know, yeah.
Some of the stuff that you were just talking about with the human resources, the change in that, does that also take some of the work out of the treasurer? Collector's office too, who are also doing a lot of the human resources paperwork, et cetera, et cetera.
So, yeah, so it's a little different, you know, there are some things that we need to get, um, that, that really need to be within the realm of, um, the assessors. Uh, of the, um, Treasurer Collector's Office, like say for example, uh, you know, I, I, one, in, in, using this and putting this together, we sought that feedback from them. So one of the things we talked about was retirement, so, um, before someone goes to, um, be able to go to Essex. And, and, and file for their retirement, they have to be able to get the baseline documentation regarding leave and things of that nature in place. So really, um, so that function really should belong in the Treasurer Collector's Office. Because they're the ones giving the update to say, okay, how much, you know, how many years have you served? What's your, what's your, um, uh, service years that are viable in this case? So those things really do need to stay on, um, on, on that front, but, um, the, but, so these things really had more to do with. Things like hiring, discipline, uh, people who are going out on FMLA leaves, Small Necessities Act, things of that nature. So the things that fall into, um, you know, in, in under the Treasurer Collector's Office really are sort of nuts and bolts aspects of like, okay, we need to sign you up for this form of health insurance. Or, you know, you know, how, what do I have left in terms of vacation days, things like that, so this, this wouldn't address that, but it, it certainly helps.
Thank you.
Gary, other comments?
Yes, I read through it the last time, uh, the ax, the ax, the primary communication, things, ax as.
Oh, yes.
And down the last line maintains, put an S on, maintains reverse, but I think content where I, it looks good now. Now, we recognize we don't have a full HR, so I think, uh, we're on the right track here. Those essential financial elements of HR stay with the Treasurer Collector, but policy, background information and the day-to-day work. I think properly goes with the ATA.
Great. Okay, other comments on the, if not, I guess we're, um, ready for a motion. Before that though, I, I, um, I will say it's been pointed out to me that, that the motion talks about, um, but, uh, the description dated October fifth. But I think what you just had up on the screen had a different date on it, so I just wanted to make sure we made a motion.
How about the version we just reviewed? I think, that's fine, that's fine. We'll, we'll update it accordingly with you just, uh, with, with the updates.
We always just want to make sure they tie.
And Gary's other, um, small pieces there, sure, okay.
All right, move to approve the Assistant Town Administrator job description dated October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any further comment or questions on that? If not, I think we're ready for a vote, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we have unanimous vote. We have a process, I think, um, that we've discussed. Brian will keep us updated and Diane will, thank you for being willing to help out with this and, um, we look forward to a recommendation from. Um, his screening group, um, for, for this, for this position. Okay, um, oh, I guess this, this, um, agenda item also. And I asked for this, I will say, um, calls for a review of the assistant. To the TA position, to the executive assistant.
You can, my apologies, we can bring that up, um, we have some suggestions on that one as well.
Yeah, there were just a couple of.
Pull that up.
Who's in charge of what, you know, like who do I go to if, kinds of things, it was not substantive, but we might as well.
Bring that up, um. Okay. Okay, yeah, so these were, these are some other comments in my Catherine, thank you, and, and Diane as well, so thank you for that. So this was something, you know, some of the, the tweaks that were made, like instead of saying on behalf of, we said as needed by. There was a, uh, coordinates the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator and managing tech communications, including updating the website. These were all, um, but friendly amendments that I think would be help, uh, very helpful if we could include, um, Catherine, is there anything else? I think those are the key pieces that we could update with this, if you, um, wanted to.
Yeah.
This would be as of October fifth.
Yeah, the only point, um, that I would make in the suggestion that's in here, um, has to do, and we saw it on the ATA as well. Has to do with the differentiation between, um, for the social media and to make it clear that. You know, the Assistant Town Administrator really has the responsibility for the content, for deciding with Ryan what's important. For us to be putting out to the public, whereas the, um, Executive Assistant more has a role to keep things up to date. To post things as received, um, and approved, and so I just, that's the only reason for making that one. One description, that one, that one change. Uh, and I think Diane, I think you had the same comment. I, I don't think, uh, this person is gonna attend meetings.
Right.
Instead of Ryan, but if Ryan needs help with anything clerical, taking minutes or whenever, so.
Those are all helpful amendments and updates, so, um, that would be great if we could vote on that too, with the other, those updates.
So I don't think we have a motion and I, I think this is just, uh, I think this is an emotion to approve the amended version. Is that fair?
That we, uh, approve the amended version of the Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator job description. Updated as of October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
That's good.
Second.
Okay, uh, comments or questions? None, seeing none, Gary for a vote?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this. Okay, so then we have, um. Discussion to plan to replace retiring Department of Public Works Director. That's you again, Ryan.
Okay, so, um, to start off, I would really sort of maybe combine items F and G together. As I shared with the board, our, uh, long-serving, uh, Director of Public Works, Bill Tyack, has given his notice and. Has, uh, basically let us know that he is going, he's planning on staying with us to the end of the calendar year. So, um, I, I just, as an aside, um, I, I just, you know, I really, uh, I wanted to express my appreciation to Bill and, and, and remind the. Community, just, you know, um, kind of effort it takes to be a DPW Director, i- it, it's really, uh, it's not a simple thing, you know, you're getting, uh, calls in the middle of the night. All the time, um, keeping the road, roadway safe and, uh, um, I have, uh, in the short time that I've been working with Bill, um, uh, have appreciated. You know, his, uh, his approach to things and, um, so I, I've enjoyed working with him, but we also know we have a plan, we have to begin to move on, so. One of the things I'm looking at this, and this was something that was highlighted, uh, for me even before I was hired in terms of things that the board, uh, knew was going to be a point of transition. And, um, and it, it's an important position for the town to be able to identify someone good. Who can, um, uh, fill this role and be relied on, uh, not just by this board, not just by myself, but all the residents. And it is really a critical, critical spot, and I, I always describe it as my big three, police, fire and DPW. This is really one of them and it's an important hire. As such, uh, in terms of thinking about what we would be looking at in this area, um, you know, there are conversations I had with some of the members about. Looking at the job description to see whether or not, were there opportunities for us to, um, uh, you know, to sort of reflect, uh, what our needs are moving forward. And one of the things that, uh, I've been emphasizing to, uh, the board members in the conversations I've had offline. Has been the importance of, um, trying to, uh, sort of upgrade this slot and think more strategically. About where we're going in the future and what our needs are. The, uh, hope would be for the, the person that we're hiring, would, that they would have, um, a more of a back, have a, an additional background in, um, uh, civil engineering. Who has hopefully had some, you know, and we're asking for this in the job description, uh, to, uh, have had, you know, experience both on, on the DPW side. But also some experience on the water side. One of the things that's really good about the relationship that, uh, Bill and Eric currently have is that they work together as a team. And they back each other up, and I think, you know, that's something, um, that, uh, that are really going to be looking for with this hire. Someone who understands the importance of teamwork and support for the water side of the operation. So, uh, if I could, I'm going to, uh, bring up to the board some of the, the recommended changes to the job description. Which, um, uh, hopefully reflect, um, some of that, um, uh, some of that, uh, some of the things I've been saying. So let me just find this if I, if I could, here it's in. PowerPoint pack, okay, bear with me. Normally with another person, uh, we, we've got a number of people helping out with this, so tonight we're, um, you know, we're, we're kind of going on, going at this alone. So, um, this is the permitting coordinator, we're gonna move forward in the agenda here and, uh, can we just look over those pieces? And this piece is going to be, excuse me. Okay, here we are, so this is, uh, this is what I am proposing for, uh, revisions, the DPW Director job description. Just to kind of go over, uh, some of the things that, uh, we've already talked about, but works cooperatively with the Water Superintendent and Town Water Commissioners. In support of the mission of the Town Water Department. We're looking for a cooperative, uh, uh, party here. Who recognizes that water is going to be a component of where they may be looking for input on and supporting them when necessary. We also wanted to be specific about this, that they're also supporting the Tree Warden and Cemetery Commission as well. So these, these folks can only do so much without, uh, the DPW Director's support, so this puts it specific in, in, in the job description to say. You are inexorably entwined with these folks and, and need to support them accordingly. So, um, the other pieces really here were, you know, to call out things that maybe there, that the prior description had some gaps in. But, you know, really, um, you know, we're really looking to hire someone who can be strong on the nuts and bolts side of things. To make sure that our roadways are safe during, um, you know, during the winter, making sure they're taking care of, of, of that in a, you know, thoughtful. And dedicated way, that's going to mean sometimes that we're going to need our DPW Director to be sort of a working foreman of sorts to roller sleeves up, get behind the, uh, the, the Ford F fifty. And, and begin to clear their own lots, uh, something that Bill does on a regular basis. We also need someone to be able to think strategically about where we're moving forward and, and, and where we position ourselves. Because what, what's been put on DPW Directors, uh, both with our MS four and our, our stormwater side of things. And the, uh, increasing requirements and paperwork and the difficulties on chapter ninety. Is that more and more is asked of, uh, of us, of our DPW Director. And we want to make sure that whomever we hired, he or she is, is prepared, uh, with that and has the kind of background and perspective that's going to help us move forward. To, um, you know, over the course of the next ten or so years, so. Uh, other things, um, you know, like here's directs the preparation of engineering plans and specifications, prepared bidding documents. And so having someone who's also familiar, hopefully on the procurement side of things. We've got, uh, you know, project management is, is a point of emphasis here. The, uh, you know, hopefully someone who can be able to, to, to pursue federal and state grants. And follow those grants, including projects that, uh, are, um, you know, that are maybe, have the support of the Community Preservation Committee. So looking for someone to partner, uh, there on that front, um, so, um, and of course here's the, the, the stormwater requirements and best management practices for stormwater. So, um, again, it's really taking the existing description, redlining it in a way. That, um, just basically beefs up what Bill already does, but, uh, just making it more specific in terms of what we're looking for. So, um, you know, I, I'd open it to the floor if anybody has any questions. My recommendation and hope, uh, within this, because as sad as it sounds, the end of the calendar year is not that far away. And, uh, so it's going to take some time to do this, but what I'd like to do is, my, my hope is tonight to get, uh, an approval for the job description. And your permission to move forward with the job posting as soon as possible to begin that process. I, I would also note that Bill, uh, has also offered, uh, to spend some time with this individual to make sure that. If there can be any overlap, that, that Bill was willing to, to do that, so, um, again, um, the town has been. Well-served by Bill and I, I, it was, it was nice of him to do that because that isn't necessarily, um, a prerequisite. So, uh, so with that, I, I just asked for the board for your approval or any suggestions you have on the job description. But also, uh, your, um, you know, uh, your go-ahead so that I can move forward and advertise, uh, for the position as soon as possible.
Comments, Gary, Diane?
Diane, you want to go first?
No, I was gonna let you go first this time.
Okay, no, I like, I like the job description. I think especially the public and the board needs to recognize. That, uh, this job has become much more detailed over the years. That due to, you know, EPA mandates on stormwater, uh, the fuel station requirements from EPA. That there's a lot more administrative and technical load placed on the DPW Director. So, um, I think also as we look forward, you know, it's going to be global impact from global warming impacts. And, you know, we've got other technologies coming down the line, so I really like the fact that we're putting some sort of engineering requirement in here as well. So I'm ready to go with this, uh, here to get the job description and, uh, you know, many, many thanks to, uh, Bill. many, many thanks to Bill, but I think we need to move promptly here to start the advertisement recruiting stage. Or did Diane?
So I would, I would agree with that. I just have a quick question for Ryan, and I'm pretty sure the answer is going to be yes. But the, the job description that we just went through, you've reviewed that with Bill and Eric and other members in the Town Hall for their input perhaps?
Yeah. So in this case, you know, I thought, I didn't actually show the specific job description to them, but I did talk about it conceptually about what I was looking to do, both with Eric and with Bill. So this does, this does reflect that conversation.
Perfect. So yeah, I think I'd like to get it out as soon as possible. I thank Bill for all his years, unbelievable. And loves to make fun of me, but I do appreciate all of his work.
Um, Ryan? Excuse me, Catherine, I just do have one question. Ryan, there is a clause there where we ask the Director to work with the Planning Coordinator and the Planning Board. I'm wondering if we could add the Land Use Department to that. And I know they will work with us, but just for any projects that come in, so when a ZBA project comes in or conservation projects, we do always send them to Bill for review. I mean, it works cooperatively with Planning Coordinator and Planning Board in review of private, but I wonder Plan Coordinator and Land Use Department.
I think that's a friendly amendment. Margaret would be happy to do that. If you notice, the word coordinates is in this job description a lot, so.
Yes, that's an important word.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So I don't have really too much to add. I certainly agree with the direction this is going in. I think it's necessary for where we as a town are, and we're the state of the world. I think also that it's important to move on this as quickly as we can. It is another, as a department had another recommendation to the board. And so I really, I don't think there's, I think it's right on. I don't think there's anything that we, I would suggest changing in terms of the concept and the wording. If.
Do we have a motion, Ryan?
There is. There is a motion to, is, there's one for the job description. I don't think it includes, is there a separate one for the posting, Ryan?
Uh, yeah.
Or do you want to add to? Yeah.
And so the posting, you don't have to, I mean, as long as that's the spirit, again, I don't necessarily need a motion to that. I mean, he's, Bill's already given his notice, and I just, it's just to let you, it's more of an informative to let you know that I'm going to be doing that. But then it's based upon this specific job description, which we can share with applicants as we see fit.
Okay. I guess.
All right. All right. Move to approve the Director of Public Works Job Description, date October 5th, 2021.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. Thank you very much, Ryan, for putting this together. Start with Gary.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Thank, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you, Margaret, for adding that in. And yeah, go for it, Ryan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we have a discussion regarding the classification and compensation grades for the respective Assistant Town Administrator and Permitting Coordinator positions. Ryan? If you could just introduce that.
Yeah, yeah. So just, this is something I had talked about a little bit with Catherine in terms of just making sure where these positions then fit on our classification and compensation schedule. The thing that I talked about with Catherine, which may be bringing it back to Jim Purdy, spoke to him a little bit today about a number of things. And I know, having this come back to the FinCom and just ask if, you know, with their perspective on this. I'm not, at this point, I'm really trying to kind of fit in where these spots are based upon our current pay structure. So I'm not proposing to change anything at this point. And also say to the board to keep in mind that we are doing the classification and compensation studies so that these positions will be reviewed with that. So this is the same caveat that I would give, I give to Jim and the FinCom as they review this. But so it's not, I'm not proposing to say to change anything. It's really more to say, where does this fit? And I'm not asking for more money or anything of that nature here. So we're not asking any action on this. I just wanted to make you aware of it. And, you know, with your permission, we'll move forward and discussing this further with Jim and the FinComs to get their perspective before it comes back to the board.
Diane, comments?
Nope.
Gary?
No, I think we know that this is sort of temporary anyhow. We'll have the classification study come back and confirm it pretty soon, I hope. So no other comments?
I think it's a, thank you, Ryan, for bringing it up. I think it's something we always, you know, we do have to keep in mind that we do have a classification chart as it exists to be amended in short term. But it's always good to look to see how any changes in positions may affect, in addition to the salaries, as you've said, none for this fiscal year, but for the structure. So I think you're right in talking to the FinCom about this. I think we may have purview from a policy point of view, but ultimately, when it's a sheet full of numbers and when it comes to salaries and what recommendations for, you know, what they should be, the FinCom at least should be looped in. So thank you for talking to Jim. I have, I have no other comments. Look forward to seeing it as it's revised.
All right. Ah. Continue on, Catherine, on this one. So I provided the board with our draft town meeting and budget calendar. I really, so what you have is intended to be sort of the proverbial, you know, cradle to grave review of what we'll be doing. So I, as I said, I met with Jim today. He is going to take a look at it. He's got the hard copy and digital version, version of this. So the key thing, the board doesn't have to necessarily, you know, come back with anything on this, but I'd ask if you have other things that you want to provide feedback on, I certainly would appreciate anything that you have to say on that. But the key thing is, we're at the window now where we're basically kicking off the budget process here. So one of the key things, of course, is developing the calendar, sharing that with staff, but also kicking off the budget process on our end and what sort of things were we looking for from the staff. We're going to be doing our operating and capital budget planning in tandem. One of the things that would be a little different for staff is making it explicit about the fact on the capital side of things, we're looking for, you know, Gary and Jim have also, who I've also talked to about this, is really looking to have a delineation of a 20-year plan that we don't necessarily have to share with the public, but know that we are basically a full accounting of all of our assets, specifically our equipment and our vehicles, but also assigning responsibilities to our building owners, if you will, to work with our facilities person, Mike Hardy, in developing a plan on that side. So for example, in the case of Town Hall, I would be considered the building owner for this case and work with Mike in developing what, you know, what does the 20-year plan look like? Because a building really is separate components. It's a roof, it's building exterior, it's HVAC, it's electricity. These are all things that are separate components that all have a useful, useful life. And so it's really to begin to think about, all right, you know, and to, to essentially assign and say to people, okay, this is the date of these particular aspects of the building. And, you know, when, you know, when we can reasonably anticipate the useful life of any of those to be. So that's some of the guidance that we're working on to get that letter out to staff, which we, Jamie and I didn't have a chance to talk to today. The calendar says that we're supposed to be getting that out today, but we'd be doing, getting that out probably then tomorrow, once we have a chance to chat. But, you know, most of these things are fairly straightforward in terms of what we'd be able to provide, which is the fact that we are a community that's in a structural deficit. We continue to have to budget conservatively and spend conservatively. You know, I want to have honest conversations with my department heads when they come to me. But I also have to be realistic, because when they come to me and say, I need, you know, X amount more staff, we really, you know, it's just something that we don't really have the capacity to turn quick, quickly on. So but, you know, we also want to have that conversation and make sure that both the board and the Finance Committee are aware of, you know, what some of those stresses are. And same goes on the capital side of things, even though we're developing a larger scale plan and that will eventually be brought down to a five-year capital plan that will be presented to both the Finance Committee and the Select Board. We also know we've got limits in terms of what we can, you know, use with free cash and funding sources to be able to move forward with that. So this is really a kickoff to that process. So I'm not necessarily asking, you know, there's no action sought tonight, but if there's things that you have that you want to make sure that we account for in this process, again, it's intended to be pretty extensive. I've also asked Jim if he also wanted to put in any updates regarding, you know, Finance Committee meetings, if he wanted to put those in there as well. I didn't want to be prescriptive to Jim. That's really up to him if he wants to keep a separate calendar. So, so my hope would be that once, maybe, you know, we, we're still going to proceed forward and kick off the budget process over the course of this week and get our staff up to speed and get that moving. But maybe we'll bring this back at our next meeting just to, you know, and have whatever updates that we've made. Again, input that you've provided, if you want to provide to me, that the FinCom might want to provide and develop that calendar. And, you know, I'd also note this, just like a job description, just like with Gary, what Gary would say, that we hope for certain things. We want those targets to be made, and there's some that are statutorily required. So we want to, but, but at the same time, we need to establish what that expectation is upfront for our staff and all the people who are involved in this process. This is, it really takes a village to make, make town meeting run and to make our budget run. And part of that step is to get, get the schedule out there. So again, no, no action today, but I think if, again, if you can take a look at it, spend some time, tell me some of the things that maybe I might be missing, or should they be taken into consideration, I would appreciate it. That's it.
Does anyone have comments? Yeah, Diane?
I actually have two. Just looking at the schedule, you have, we have select board meetings on election days. So we're going to have to alter that a little bit. November 2nd and November 30th, probably are not going to be good select board meetings. And also two Saturdays, we're asking people to come.
Right, right. So that's, so, so it'll probably, first of all, the idea of it is, that is a new, a new component, Diane. So the idea is the second Saturday would be our capital Saturday. I don't envision it being that long a meeting. I think it's really more of a reminder to us about the commitment we need to make to our capital assets and to be able to track them. And some of it's going to be just explaining that process and how, you know, and what each department had went through to get to that point. So all those meetings I anticipate are still going to be happening via Zoom, so everybody can still be in their pajamas, drinking coffee. And, you know, I think we can make that work. I don't intend to take up too much time from anybody on that, but I do, it is important that when we look at the capital plan, we're using that to help inform whatever items that we'll be suggesting for town meeting. And then, of course, justifying that purchase to the Select Board and the FinCom. So that, that's the thinking on it. To your other point, November 2nd and November 30th being election days, is the, does the board have any ideas about how you might want to alter that, move it back a day maybe to the 3rd and December 1st or something, you know, if you had any thoughts on that?
I think, Diane, with your town clerk experience, I think moving it back a day is perhaps not the best idea, because it seems like Town Hall is really busy the day before an election, getting ready for the election. So clearly, those meetings need to be rescheduled, and we may have to talk offline, but it feels like we shouldn't have them. We should either have them on a different, like on a Wednesday, or on the off Tuesdays that we wouldn't normally have meetings. Just my off-the-top-of-my-head thinking.
Okay, okay. Maybe, again, maybe it's something that they'll let the board think about and get back to me. You can also look at your own schedules. I would note, November 30th is also when we hope to have the classification hearing and set a tax rate too. So, so which is fine, again, if that goes a day or two here or there, a week before, it's fine, so.
That would be awesome if we could get that done in November, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
It would be. It is one of those meetings, though, that we, I think is important to have on a, on a regular, a regularly scheduled selection, at least night, so that it doesn't, so that we can become as transparent as possible with something as high-profile as tax classification and tax rate. So maybe we should take on, Ryan, take on the next few months, I guess, and put together a bit of a Select Board calendar, and then we can get some input from folks and share it around.
The calendar you do have does have all the prospective Select Board meeting dates.
Yes, yes.
Now on April 2nd. So this would be just a tweak of those.
Right.
The November 2nd and November 30th meeting. So thank you, Diane, for that. That's helpful.
Other comments on the schedule, budget, calendar in general? I have a few. Just early input kind of things. Certainly very comprehensive. Oh, I'm sorry, Gary, I didn't see.
Do we have a slide so the public can see the dates at all?
Sure, hold on. I can, I can actually bring it up on the, on the Excel.
There are, um, this is a very comprehensive calendar while Ryan is finding it, and it includes, you know, actions that are required by the school committee, by our, by the town, and also several committees in town. So it's really pretty comprehensive. And I think I have only looked at it in the, in the broadest sense. That's close. There we go.
Yeah.
That's the first part of it, anyway. So my, my comments on, on the first part, the first one is a, is a question, really. We have, and it's, I believe it's been very useful not only to Wynton, but to the school district. Sometime around now, we've kind of, we've had a sort of a look back and a look forward and had a presentation on an overview, a really high-level overview of the budget and revenue forecast, what we think are the issues and the way it might look. I don't see that here. And as I said, it's, I think it's very helpful for the Select Board when we, for the public and the Select Board when we come around to trying to decide what, you know, the sort of policies or direction we want to go with the budget. Plus, it's, it has always been helpful in guiding us towards where we need or can afford relative to the schools, so.
And Catherine, the thing I'd say to you right now, we're, the finance team is busy closing up the fiscal year. They just had the auditors basically cleaning, you know, they're working with the auditors to clean things up. So I can talk to Jamie about that, and I think probably we could do that, hopefully at a, at a Select Board meeting. And, but I'll make a note of that and, and look to slot that in somewhere.
Great. I think that the FinCom would be interested in joining us for that as well, just as you're planning. Then the next comment I have, I'm not sure. So the, this board needs to weigh in to a certain degree on policy. You know, what do we see for this year? What is our view of, you know? In years past, I've heard things like, I won't even say it because someone will quote me, and I'm just giving an example. But, um, so things like, you know, what direction do we want to go in? How important is it to stay, you know, low? Do we want level services? Do we want, do we need for it to be a level funding? Just a conversation and some direction for, for the administration in putting together the administration's budget, which is the first one that we see. I don't, that may just be an agenda item on one of these Select Board meetings that are listed, and that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted the fact that that is one of our jobs, and we should. And we should remember to, or decide where it fits best in, in one of these, in a meeting. Um, so that was policy guidelines. Um, so the next question I have, uh, this speaks to Diane's question a little bit too. So the November 20th, and I, I understand these dates may change. I'm just using it as a reference. The November 20th meeting that says Saturday operating budget meeting, is that the, but the meeting that, uh, we would, I think of as the meeting with the FinCom and the department heads?
Together, yeah. Budget kickoff essentially.
Yeah, got it. I, I actually think, um, uh, two Saturdays is tough. But I actually think separating capital, uh, to a sep- a separate meeting, um, is a good idea. It tend, it has in the past been sort of thrown on at the end of the whole day meeting. And I don't, to your point, I think you're, Ryan, I think, um, your point of giving it a little more focus and a little more attention is probably a good thing. And I think it's hard to, it would, it's, it, it merits its own meeting, um, although hopefully a shorter one.
Right.
So I guess.
Generally, that's usually the case for the capital. It's, uh, right. It's a real focus on again, knowing what at that point free cash should be established and we'd be able to say, okay, what can, you know? What are we going to need to fill in the gap on our structural deficit and then take, take it from there? So in terms of, you know, we'll be looking at the specific, uh, high priority items for, uh, approval at town meeting.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I'm, I'm on to, um, February. Just noticing something that hit, hit me. Um, this, this schedule contemplates the select board closing the warrant on February 8th. But it doesn't contemplate the school district voting its, or adopting its budget until February 10th.
Right.
I don't think it's a good idea to close our warrant.
Yeah. So note that what that is, it would be the closing the warrant, it would, that's closing the warrant for, um, for, 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 uh, uh, any of the, um, the 10 voter registration. So it's not necessarily, so I, I can be more specific on that. It's, it's, you need to open the warrant and then close the warrant. So for like that one month, basically where you're saying, if, if the public wants by 10 voters, put in any, um, any articles, any petition articles. That's really where the focus of that is. So I can, I can clarify that.
Yeah, please. Cause that's not been our past practice. When we've closed the warrant, we've essentially said, okay, we're, we're done. Of course it has always, it, it also precludes any, um, citizens petitions after the warrant is closed. And it also assumes that we can open it again if we need to. Um, but I think, I think the, the general public's perception is that when we close the warrant, you know, sort of everything that's in the warrant is set. And of course, that can't be true until we have a school budget, right?
Um, so it may be just changing the language on it. Um, so it's, I, I, I'll work on the language.
Okay. Um. I think that those were all the, you know, sort of procedural or big picture things that I have. There are lots of dates here. Um, and I appreciate them all, you know, if you're coordinating with other groups. Cause as you said, it, it takes several groups to make this happen. Those are my, just my preliminary comments. I think the, um, FinCom might have, have more.
And again, you know, other input that you have, I'll, I'll be, you know, again updating this accordingly, uh, for you, uh, so, uh, so thank you. And, uh, that's good.
Okay, um, moving right along and my compute, my iPad keeps closing because we're talking a while. But the next item on our agenda is J, a review of the indigenous land acknowledgement presentation, um, that we received on the 21st. Um, and a potential vote on next steps. Um, I think Ryan and has come up with a, um, a recommendation, um, which I'm interested to have everyone here.
So, uh, Catherine, thank you. Uh, we, we discussed and kind of move, move up here in the schedule. Um, uh, as you recollect, we discussed this matter at the, um, at the last select board meeting. And, um, one of the things, and I have to give Jackie a lot of credit for this, that we came up with, was this idea of, uh, uh, of, um, formally having the board formally, um, adopt a proclamation recognizing, um, October 12th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, um, I would tell you, uh, also on top of this, that, uh, last night, um, I was at the, uh, human rights committee meeting. Uh, they reviewed this and they unanimously supported, um, this, uh, declaration. And, uh, so I, I think it covers a lot of the things that we were discussing. We also, um, had used the presentation and tried to feed pieces of that presentation that was provided to you at your last meeting in this declaration. In fact, actually I believe that they went, uh, to the presenter to ask hi- him, his perspective on it. And he was, he thought this was great. So, um, so I think the request, uh, of you this evening is, uh, you know, to see if you wanted to treat this at all. Or, and, and hopefully, uh, approve it and then, you know, later sign the proclamation. Um, so the human rights committee was appreciative of the board's, uh, responsiveness and thoughtfulness and, and, uh, coming forward on this.
Gary, thoughts?
I think as, uh, we talked about last time, the focus, uh, would be most productive if we stick to, uh, this sort of thing proclamation and education of the public on this issue. Rather than trying to, uh, create some sort of physical, you know, plaques and so forth, that will likely pass away. Uh, my only comment is I think we need to put in the one word in the fourth, whereas we all live on former indigenous land. So that we don't encounter any, um, kind of legal aspects or whatever.
That's a good point. Diane, comments?
I think, I think it's great. Um, what else are we going to do with it besides, are we going to bring it up every year or?
So just, th- thank you for, that's a great question Diane, if you don't mind. What we would propose to do is to be able to, after you sign this, scan it. We'd also then put it up on the website, uh, along with the presentation. So, um, that, you know, it's, it, this becomes a public document where we're making the public aware of the board's action in this case. So that's, that, that's, um, what we'd like to do with it.
Looks good to me.
I just, um, I, I think it's great. I think we can, putting it on the website, particularly in, um, in the context of the presentation, which is really what led us to this proclamation is a, is a really good idea for people to be able to see it. Um, if around this Indigenous Peoples' Day each year, we want to bump it up into the news section of the website to just remind people of it. That's fine, but I think this is great. Um, and I'm glad that the human rights committee, uh, agreed there. I just have one typo, uh, it's a very last line. And I just think there's a redundancy there. It says, um, acknowledge the Massachusetts tribe every year on the second Monday of October annually. I think we can say every year and we don't really have to say annually as well.
And add the, after the on, on the second Monday.
Yeah. See, I automatically just put that in there and it wasn't even in writing. So on the second Monday annually, or every year on the second Monday of October, period, period.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So. If not, we're ready for a motion, I think. Which I think we have on a slide.
I'm just trying to find it, uh.
This is an example of how we don't always understand how complicated it is behind the scenes for these Zoom meetings. We just kind of show up and the slides.
Don't pay attention to the man behind the curtain.
No, he's doing great, but he's doing what normally two people would have to do. So think about that for every meeting that we have, for every meeting that's on Zoom. Hi.
All right. So we've, uh, insert the word former and we've, uh, changed that last line. Otherwise, as amended, move to approve the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Second.
Okay. Do we have further conversation? If not, as amended, um, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. And again, I thank the, um, presenter and the human rights committee for bringing this to our attention.
Catherine, I did one more point just to follow up if I could, before we move on from this. Um, to Gary's point, uh, about, um, the education and the proclamation piece on it. Uh, so, um, just, so you're aware, I think that, uh, I think Martha in the conversation we had last night was still asking about, you know, what was the board's perspective on, you know, um, formally supporting it? This was, this is one concept. So, uh, and I think Gary articulated it well. But I just wanted to see if we could get a perspective, um, from the entire board. So that, um, if Martha then follows up with Catherine, Catherine then has something that she can then respond back to on this. So I'm just trying to be helpful because there did seem to be some, e- even though they were supportive of this, the question would be, is there anything else? And so I just, um, just, and Gary's suggestion is, is, is a good one. The question is just to make, to see what, what the other members have. So the Catherine's got some information.
Yeah. So Gary, if you want to repeat that recommendation?
So I think the, uh, the points be made, we know there's a coalition out there. So there's a non-government organization that has been, uh, expressed its interest in this whole wide ranging goal. So, uh, given our circumstances, I would not see this as a expenditure on the part of the town. But something that we would, uh, support through the proclamations or other informal ways. But very important, I think it, you know, the education way is, it would be the most productive return on our investment of time.
So our response is basically a proclamation, um, a, a, a permanent site on our website and, um, and the request for, you know.
And, and, you know, I think if, uh, you know, through the human rights committee, they come back to us and say, you know, we want to have this, uh, seminar and so forth. And I always should think the town would say, yeah, great, go for it. But, you know, I don't think.
Right.
It's a budget item.
So this is our response to their request. Is that what we all understand and agree on?
And support, and, uh, support if they, you know, need, want to do anything else, certainly to come to us and see what, what we can do.
Right.
Okay, Catherine, I just meant to be helpful to you.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I heard her even at our meeting. And I think, um, you know, there were a lot of, uh, suggestions as, as how we could, um, support this land acknowledgement. And I think this is the way we're, uh, agreeing, I hope, that we will support it. And, um, if there are further requests in the form of, you know, support for forums or education, I think we're there. Um, but I think that's pretty much what.
Okay.
Where we're at. Right, right, right? Okay. Um, wow, personnel policies. So we've had, uh, this is the next thing on the agenda. We, almost the last thing on the agenda. We've seen, um, all of these policies at least once. And we have received, um, input on a couple of them from a few residents tonight. So I think the goal, um, if I'm correct, Ryan, is to go through them and to see which ones we think we can vote on and move forward with. Or if there are some that we feel like require more work.
Correct, correct.
Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yes.
So this, okay, so this, this motion is to approve all policies. Um, how about we just go through them very briefly, one by one and maybe pull out? I think there's one that we're going to want to pull out, but at least get a sort of consensus on them. So, okay. Um, and do we, let's see, I'm thinking that they are here. So the first one is the sixth leave bank for union employees. Um, does anyone have any further discussion on that? I don't know if you can bring, bring these up easily, Ryan, or Gary?
I just had one question on the, uh, sixth bank committee. Do we need to specify how the other quote, non-union employee is selected onto this?
Right. That's a question that came up before.
You know, it says town administrator, finance director and a non-union employee. So I think if it's the comprehensive, uh, document, it should say, this is how we're going to get the quote, non-union employee on the committee. Otherwise looks great.
I think Jackie said something about that. There was a reason that it was kind of not stated, but I don't recall what it was.
And I think she said there was always volunteers, but I think, you know, so we can leave it to Ryan whether we really need to specify that or not, but.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's critical, Gary.
Right.
You know, if it's, um, I don't, I don't think it's, as long as this, you know, as long as there's someone there who's represented, uh, means by which, you know, uh, I think that it should be okay.
I, I do wish we had a way to codify where that person comes from or how that person ends up on that committee. Um, or strengthen the fact that, I'm, I'm trying to find it. Um, must have, you know, so in other words, I, I would not want that committee to go make decisions without that third person because no one volunteered. Um, and I'm trying.
Right. I mean, that's, I think that's pretty current. You'd have to have the person on it. So, right.
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 Yeah, I'm just trying to find, I remember this coming up before, um, trying to find me where it actually is without spending too much time on this.
It's on page 54 of the, uh, the packet if that, that helps.
Well.
And it's under the title, uh, sixth bank committee.
There we go. Um, which shall come, be comprised of, okay, I. Yeah. Okay. So I, I could be okay with it since it says, well, shall be, is it will be, will be?
Shall is.
Is the more.
Mandatory.
Shall is mandatory?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I think as long as we're sure that we won't proceed without that third person.
All right. All right.
Yeah, okay.
Thumbs up for sixth bank policy then?
Yeah. Do we, are we comfortable voting on these, the ones that we're comfortable voting on as we go? What, what do we think?
If we scroll right through and pull the ones out that we want to vote for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next one is the sixth bank lead for non-union employees. Which I think is.
Yeah. Is the one we just looked at.
Right. And the union employee one is pretty much the same, I think. Any, anything that we need to, any other comments that we have other than the ones that we've made on that one?
Good here.
Good here. Okay. Um, employee social media use is the next one, I think.
And that's more, it's also social media policy in general too. So it's also would be applicable to boards and committees as to how they, if they wanted to, you know, present anything or what have you to.
Right.
I thought that looked good.
Yeah, my only comment here is a commu- I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead.
Good here.
Okay, um, was that I think if we're going to add a new, I'm not sure what that will be. Um, social media platform, um, that we just, it doesn't require a, approval by the select board, which is fine. But I think it would be really important for us to know about it beforehand. Um, so that we're, we just know that there's something coming. But other than that, I think this is good. Okay, um.
Timing, holiday calendar, uh.
Yeah. Do we have?
Oh, here it is. Yeah.
Oops. Do we have one? Yeah, we have health and insurance first.
Okay.
I don't see that on the list.
Yes, I think, question is. So I think this, Catherine, that this might be the, um, J revocation hiatus, is it the hiatus period?
No, this is a short little one that.
The insurance is supposed to be reflective of our current plan. So.
Right.
It's just more of an. It's just more of an update, but, so you're right, it isn't necessarily listed, but it would have to be updated anyway. Because it's, you know, we, we've changed on from those policies. It's unfortunate it's so prescriptive here, but so, but it's really up to the board and it's, it's just more of a reflection of what we currently offer.
Two sentences look good.
Yeah. Are, are we required, I guess we're required, it would be important for someone, for us to have this little policy so that people know just from looking at our personnel policies, what we offer?
Correct, yeah, just, it's just a basic overview. You know, I mean, it's arguably, you know, you're always trying to catch up with it, they just say, you know, we offer, it's, if we offer health and medical, you know, we offer medical insurance, that might do the same thing, but this at least keeps us updated.
Okay. Not really pertinent to the specific policies, but lest I forget, it seems like when these are all put together in whatever form they're put together, that they would have a date that they were approved and there would be some statement of how often they would be reviewed so that we don't end up with another policy book that, you know, never gets updated. So that's just a sort of a general comment, not sure we're there yet, but I've been thinking about that. The next actual policy is holidays. I think we talked about that last time. Anything else anyone wants to add on that one?
Good.
Good, good.
Good.
Okay. So recruitment and selection is the next one. I've got a comment, but I'll wait if Gary and Diane have something.
I don't.
I think the, my question is how do we ensure that the board chairs or, you know, department heads will get the information? But how do we ensure that the board chairs are familiar with these procedures that we put down the policies?
They'd be getting all the policies updated, Gary, you know, this would be inclusive of that.
All right.
So my question is a little more basic and it actually mirrors, I think, something that Deirdre Parati was saying in her comments about other policies. This policy confuses me relative to who, who it applies to. It, it looks like it says its purpose is employ, employment recruitment in its, in the purpose. But then it goes on to say that it, it applies to all positions covered by the appointing authority, being the select board, and to other non-elected positions. And then it says, then it says board chairs or department heads. So I just think this one, someone needs to look at this, I think, to make sure that it's internally consistent. I don't know who, I think you said this to Gary. I, I think this is meant for employees of the town. And I don't, it's kind of hard, we, we call them employees, sometimes we call them appointed, but it doesn't really apply to just positions that are covered by the appointing authority of the select board. Matter of fact, mostly it doesn't. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Look at that Catherine, you want to take, we can put a hold on it?
Yes, that would be one, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to think about a little more.
That's good.
Okay?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, what do we have next? What do we have next?
Salary.
Right.
Let me make sure.
Right.
It's kind of all blends into one another. There's recruitment and selection.
Yeah.
Go into, okay. All right.
Yeah, classification and salary.
Yeah, okay.
Comments on this one? Anybody have any, we've seen it before, but further comments?
No, I think we're good.
Diane, I think.
No, yeah, we're good on that one.
Okay, I, I think my only comment is I, I presume that the, this is where the the classification table would live, or one of the places it might live as it's, because it refers to it.
Not necessarily because these are policies, Catherine, so then to put, you know, to put it in here, I, I don't think that would be the best place for it.
Okay.
Really is something that should be within the warrant or, you know, with, and regularly updated based on the budget needs, so.
Okay.
You know, here's, the problem, the problem with, as we said, like the policies is that, you know, like we have with like the health piece. You know, you want to make it as flexible as possible because this is something that stays sort of more on the, on the shelf, if you will.
Right.
But.
Right, and, and it does reflect that it would, it will change, so, okay, I'm good.
Correct.
Direct deposit.
This is more just to make sure that we have a process in place to, you know, that if anyone is looking to make any change, that there isn't any fishing or any other, you know, just making clear to staff that what they have to do to get this, make this change in place.
In person, has to be in person.
Yeah.
It doesn't say in person, but it should say in person.
Oh, must be done in person at the treasurer collector's office? That seems like a
We can, we can add that.
reasonable, friendly.
Yeah.
Okay, we move on. Travel and transportation is the
These are great changes, very updated.
Yeah. Gosh, we actually have a policy that reflects what we're doing.
And that is another example, again, you get too prescriptive and then it doesn't catch up, so.
Right.
Right, right.
That's better.
Are we good to move on?
Good.
Good.
Okay. Personnel evaluation policy.
I'd like to pull, hold this one and see what Deirdre had to say on that.
Okay.
Yep, I agree.
And I think too, as a technical thing, I still am not quite sure about the ineligible for Mirapay for a new fiscal year. Does that mean the next fiscal year or what does new mean? So that's just something for Ryan. It's all good, that's, yeah, hold.
Okay. The next one is the revocation of the hiatus period for GIC, since we no longer have GIC.
Right.
That seems like that should be pretty straightforward, yes?
Good.
Yes.
Okay. The last, the last one is the, well, I think they're together, but it's the code of conduct slash anti-discrimination, sexual harassment policy. And I think we've already discussed holding this one, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. So, yeah, so going back at the list. We're we're holding, I have E recruitment and selection. Did we include I? To hold the personnel and, yeah, and the anti-discrimination.
And, and the, why don't you do the code and the anti-discrimination?
Oh, yes, yes.
I think Deirdre could work on that with you too.
Yes.
So is E, I, and L?
E, I, K, L, K, and L.
Okay.
It's the code of conduct.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, okay.
So let me ready for the motion then?
Sure, go for it, Gary.
So move to approve all policies as reviewed on October 5th, 2021, public hearing, except items E, I, K, and L as listed under old business for the agenda of select board five, October 21.
Second.
Is that specific enough? That's probably a question for Ms. Tinsley. Do we need to, I will insert the policies into the motion.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's great to have a great reporting secretary. I'm sorry, I've lost track of whether we had a second on that.
I seconded.
Okay. Anything further? If not, we'll be able to vote on a bunch of these, so Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes, with a, a big thank you to, I think, Jackie and other people who worked so hard to get us this far.
This is one of the things that Jackie wanted to address before, before she left, so, yeah, so thank you.
Yeah. Okay, relative, so to the next one, old business follow-up discussion from the workshop. So I think we've, we've discussed the fact that we need to have a follow-up discussion. And I'm going to make the suggestion that we, we think about tonight, maybe identify some, some dates and then get back to Ryan with the dates that work for us and what we perceive as the follow-up items that we need to discuss. Is that, does that work?
So you wanted to do dates now or we're going to do dates by email?
Well, I was, well, I think we're going to ultimately do them by email. What I was just interested to know from, from the board is if, if it works to do this, this follow-up on either a Friday morning, preferably, or a Saturday morning in the next, you know, several weeks. So if we provided those dates.
No, Catherine, I will not be available on the sixteenth for that, so.
Okay.
Sixteenth of August.
I would refer to Diane also as she's working, so Friday or Saturday really doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, that can work too. I was thinking that we, we should look at the calendar that we have and the budget, kind of put that into our personal schedules and see, see what's left.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I have two, what's left, are there any days left?
That's good, Diane.
To see what, if in general, we should be looking at Fridays and Saturdays, just in general. And that maybe we could look at our Fridays, to your point Diane, makes sense to look at our Fridays and Saturdays, possibly starting within the month of October, because there are some really important follow-ups that other things will follow on. The one that I'm thinking about is we have not yet discussed the roles and responsibilities of the TA, the job description versus the select board and I'm thinking Ryan might, after, I don't know, than three months yet, Ryan. That's probably one that it would be useful for us to talk about, so this, as soon as possible. So if we can look at our calendars for Friday or Saturdays. And maybe.
I would also, if you wanted, if, if I may too, you know, that's great, we could do that, send me some dates, but then the other thing would be too, I could put together, looking at what we went through already in the first workshop, seeing what, what else remained outstanding that we, we wanted to come back to, just to give some suggestions about, you know, logical follow-up items, it will be
Great.
still had to discuss, so just as a starting point and then we can add to that as we see fit.
Sound good? Okay, so we'll wait for the list to see if we want to add anything, but in the meantime, perhaps get to Ryan with some potential dates. Okay, wow. We are, here we are. I always, always think maybe I should come up with something that hasn't been anticipated, but I
Now it is a Red Sox game on Catherine, come on.
Hey, it started at eight, we're kind of behind. I do not have any other matters. We do have a regular school committee, oh my gosh, whoa, that's a blast from the past. A select board meeting scheduled for October 19th. And as Ryan reminded us, October 21st is the Town Government Study Committee Public Forum. It's really an important issue for us and I think as much awareness as we can raise so that people at town meeting can make an informed decision, this is one opportunity, so that forum is on the 21st. Anything else?
Just one question for Ryan. Brian, do you want to mention any event occurring on this Thursday? Relative to going away?
Oh, right, yeah, just, just a reminder to all of the, you know, for, for all of you, we've got an event going on at 4:30 on Thursday, it is Jackie's farewell event. So Margaret is generously offered to help organize that, so my hope is to be able to do it outside and if not, we can, you know, be putting masks on and coming inside for it, so. So I hope, I hope all members can, can join us for that and we also put that invitation out to all committee and board chairs as well, so to, to join us on that front.
I also want to mention Sheila Bouvier had a lot to do with it.
Sheila as well, thank you, thank you.
And unfortunately Sheila can't be here on Thursday.
Oh, that's too bad.
I know, yeah, she's disappointed, but just the timing worked out. She's got a trip planned, so. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that reminder. Anything else? If not, I'll take that last motion.
So on that note, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, I don't think we need to discuss that. We'll go right to a vote on that. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we are adjourned at nine 16 PM. Again, we've got a lot done tonight, so thank you very much. We have a few follow-ups. I know Ryan's been keeping track of them. And we'll see you all at the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.